22 if we could all please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. April.
Yeah, send me right back.
Please let the record show that we are all present. I'd like to move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. I have no additions or deletions.
I'll move the approval of the agenda as submitted.
I'll support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're going to move on to announcements and communications. Anyone have anything they'd like to? Go ahead, Chris.
Just one. Both Robert and I attended the SEMCOG meeting, the General Assembly, and our township delegates were voted upon, and it is the same to as last time, Chris Barnett, ordinary Township Supervisor, and Don Green, Milford Township Supervisor. So no changes.
It's the same as usual? Okay. Moving on. Anyone else have anything they'd like to announce? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the call to the public. This is where anyone can stand up and talk about things that are non-agenda related. Please state your name and address for the record and keep it in a three-minute, if we possibly can. I think we can. All right, seeing none, we're going to move on, close the call and move on to reports. First report is DDA. Amy.
Hello, everyone. I wanted, I sent out a memo in your board packets, but just to highlight a few of the items that were in there. I recently attended the Main Street Oakland County Summit event where we got to meet with some of the other members and talk about trends, what's going on in each of the individual communities, some best practices, and we also met individually with some Main Street Oakland County representatives so that we can begin working on the process of integrating some of their program into our Lyon Township DDA framework. I also got the opportunity to tour the new Wabasto facility and met with some representatives there. That facility is just amazing, so we're looking forward to them getting up and running fully. The DDA Board is continuing to work on strategic planning for the fourth leg of the Ring Road project. And then I'm also looking for a volunteer that would like to participate in the Love for Lyon campaign. It's something that was started a couple of years ago between the previous DDA Director Tina and the Kensington Chamber of Commerce, and that group meets monthly for approximately an hour. It's usually on Wednesday mornings around nine o'clock, and it meets with representatives from the City of South Lyon, the Kensington Valley Chamber of Commerce, the Lyon Township, and the South Lyon DDA. And basically, we're just looking for somebody to help promote the businesses in and around Lyon Township. They're going to businesses, taking some photos, stopping by, introducing themselves. We do have some representation, as I said, from the South Lyon Board of Directors, so we would really love to have somebody on our board that might be willing to volunteer to help out with that. So if you're interested after this meeting, or sometime the next week, if you could reach out and let me know, I'd love to have one of you guys involved in that. And then lastly, on Thursday, May 5th, at 7:00 PM, at the Flagstar Strand Theater for the Performing Arts in downtown Pontiac, there's going to be the Main Street Oakland County Awards Program, and we're looking for a strong representation for Lyon Township as we are going to be recognized as one of the newest members of the Main Street Oakland County program. This is our opportunity to meet with other Main Street organizations. It's also opportunity for us to meet with some of the county commissioners and really start promoting the needs specifically for our Lyon Township DDA, and talking to them about possibly amending our agreement with Oakland County too, which is going to be a big goal of ours this year. So the more face time we can get with our representatives with that organization is going to be very helpful moving forward. So I will be sending out the specifics on the program once I get all of those to let you know how to reserve your spots, but if you're interested, again, let me know, and I'll make sure that I get all that information out to everybody, but we would appreciate a strong showing if anybody can attend. Is there any questions?
Anyone?
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Moving on, Chief, fire.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to announce that we have taken receipt of our air packs from FEMA. This was a few months back where we received our largest grant of $450,000 approximately, and we have, we have all the air packs, the training is continuing, large training tomorrow night for all of the firefighters. So again, that was supported by this board and greatly appreciated because it's obviously a very expensive venture, and we were able to save all but 10% of the, of our share for the taxpayers. Also, our talks continue with Redstone Architects. We meet with them on next Thursday, the 14th, to go over the response time data and to decide, or to at least examine what we may look at for future emergency delivery moving forward, and I'll give you an update on that next month as well. Finally, I'd like to, the reason, you know, we like to dress up like this is to bring on our new firefighters, and Noah Kent is getting, was sworn in prior to this meeting tonight, and he is going to be our newest full-time career firefighter, and his first full-time shift, even though he has been here for a couple of years, his first full-time shift will be tomorrow. So I'd like to bring up Noah along with his parents, Bill and Kelly, and they will pin his badge on for him.
Noah?
I have to provide the badge, don't I? Rehearse this.
Got a script, okay, great. Anyway, that concludes my report unless there's any questions. All right, thank you all.
Thank you. All right, going to move on to the Lieutenant. How you doing, Lieutenant?
I'm good. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just a couple, a couple of quick incidents to report here. We've been experiencing a rise in fuel theft, so I wanted to make sure people in the community were aware of that. So far, it's only been from the work sites, and it's been several hundred gallons on a couple of occasions. So if you have a large amount of fuel on your property, figure out a way to secure it, or at least get it under surveillance, just in case you become victimized. Also, the Sheriff's Office is continuing to accept donations for the Police Athletic League, so if you have an old bike, busted up bike, any kind of bike you're not using, please feel free to bring it up to the substation. We accept them 24/7, and we'll get them put to use for a good cause. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thanks, Lieutenant.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. All right, moving on, Planning Commission. Patty, anything?
Yep, I have, it's my agendas here. Sorry about that. We had two meetings. The first one was March 14th. We did have two public hearings on that day. They were for the Wall Bridge LDC III Special Land Use and Site Plan, and also the, I hope I say this right, Harrigan Distributors Special Land Use, and of course, the Wall Bridge LDC III is specially used this on today with approval. They also need a variance, but with that, as long as the Board approves the special land use, they'll be in good shape. We had, under Old Business, we had the Model Homes Text Amendment, which was reviewed, and it had been tabled, but that's moving forward. And then under New Business, we had the Coyote Development Conceptual Review, and it was just, the Board had a lot to say about that, so I'm not sure when they're coming back to the Planning Commission, but we did discuss that for quite a while. And then we had the extension of the new Hudson Medical Site, which is over here on the Ring Road, and that was approved for them. Then we had...
I actually did have a question about that one.
Sure.
Maybe it's a Brian question. I thought when, when we were extending those things, it was going to be a year from the date of the initial approval.
When we talked...
But the minutes noted that it was from that meeting, and I just...
I can, I can answer that. The ordinance isn't specifically clear. It just says the Planning Commission can approve a year extension, so we did talk about that and chose that specific date.
Okay.
If nothing else, it's for clarity, we know when the meeting date was, we can always reference back to that meeting.
Okay. Here we go. All righty. Second. And then our last meeting was just Monday, March 28th, and we had, under New Business, we had the Research Drive Holding Site Plan Review, and that's going to be an addition on the, what's, Light Source, wasn't it, Brian?
Yes.
Light Source? And so that was definitely approved. He actually sold the property, he kept, he kept the building, but he sold, I should say, he sold his business to a similar company that's doing it, and they've just progressed and need more space. And then we had the Drop Horse Brewery Outdoor Seating, and they're going to put in a little extension on the front, and it's, it's a very nice covered patio, and we approved that, and that actually was all we had on our agenda. So that concludes my report.
Okay. Any questions? All right, moving on to ZBA. Lisa, anything going on at the ZBA?
March was canceled, and April is also canceled.
Man, you guys are busy. Okay, we're going to move on to the Building Department. I'll, I'll pick in for that. Dave got stranded, he was on vacation, and he got stranded in Florida for another week.
How unfortunate.
So he's, he's gone. The Building Department continues to be extremely busy. They're doing lots and lots of inspections, and it's, it's a busy place, but Dave will be back next month, maybe. Water, I, I can tell you that the tanks are all installed, the plumbing has been started. They're hoping that the plumbing of the softening, the first softening system will be done possibly by the end of this month, and they may start testing the water in May. So we'll see. Everything is going pretty good, all the parts are in, and again, we have an open invitation for anyone who'd like to go on a tour. So just get ahold of me, and I'll take you out there, and we can, you can see what's going on. I'd love to do that, so just let me know. Any questions about that? No? Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business. This is a second reading of a text amendment for non-conforming uses and structures. I don't think anything was changed.
I did find two little, a couple little things here. One, there, there's a couple typographical things I'll just send Brian, but substance-wise, in the list of the six criteria for determining abandonment, which is 1903B, under six, it ends in the intent to abandon the non-conforming use. I'd like to add or structure because the section is about determining non-conforming uses or structures. And then the other, actually, I'm wrong, the other piece, I talked to Brian, and we decided to leave it alone, so.
Is everybody good with what Robert wants to change? I don't see a problem with that. Anybody? Okay.
I'll move the approval of, sorry, where are we at here?
07.
I'm going to say ordinance 07-22, subject to the minor amendment discussed by Trustee Swain tonight.
I'll support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to new business. First one is a consideration of approval for the Wall Bridge LDC III Special Land Use. Brian, you want to start that off?
I can, thank you, John. While the screen is catching up to us here, the proposal in front of you this evening is a 409,000 square foot spec building on a 28-acre site. This is the first site of potentially seven that will be developed on the larger Wall Bridge piece on the west side of South Hill Road. It is directly south of the Wabasto Building with the drain separating the two sites. The reason that this is in front of you is it is a site that is in the Wellhead Protection Overlay District, and so any tenant there goes through the special land use review process, and similar to what we did with Wabasto and some of the other large spec buildings in the Wellhead District, it'll go, undergo a special land use review for the spec portion, and then when any tenant comes before you as well. So there isn't a tenant identified today, but, so we'll just be looking at the shell and the design of the building and the site plan. To that end, the Planning Commission has approved the site plan conditional on special land use approval. All of the zoning standards have been met for the site. It's a rectangular building, and it's pretty, pretty monumental in size, but it is well-designed. The Planning Commission, sorry, the Planning Commission appreciated the, the variation in colors and materials and things, trying to break up this pretty massive facade, so it got glowing remarks in that regard. Same thing with the landscaping, once it's established and growing, should help soften that up as well, so. In terms of the standards that you'll be considering this evening for compatibility with our adjacent land uses and master plan and zoning ordinance, we find no issues there. It's an appropriate use. It's a, again, massive scale building, but it is a massive piece of property and could potentially be broken up into four tenants. We make mention in our review letter that some of the specific standards for chemicals that are going to be used and processes that are going to be happening in this facility won't be known until a tenant is procured, and so with that caveat, we do think that it is an appropriate use and can be, can meet all of our special land use criteria for the Wellhead Protection Overlay District. So with that, again, the Planning Commission has approved the site plan conditional on special land use, as well as a height variance. This building is proposed to be the same height as the Wabasto structure, so that does require a variance, but that would be, that is a process that can only happen once the Township Board has weighed in on the special land use, so we'll do that at the ZBA in the coming months. With that, we would recommend approval of the project of the special land use for the spec building only, with just the conditions of a height variance that is granted, as well as that any tenants will have to undergo special land use review as well.
Okay. Lastly, I noticed you had some, you had a little note there. You have anything you want to add?
No issues.
Okay. All right, so, anyone have anything they'd like to talk about on the, you have any questions?
No.
The applicant is here, if you have any questions. It's a vacant building, so.
Yeah, the only statement I wanted to make is I think that the most important thing that stands out to me is the fact that every tenant will have to come back and share their use with us and make sure that they meet all the criteria in the Wellhead Protection Area, which obviously we take very seriously, you know, on any project in our Wellhead Protection Area, and I think that that's, you know, important, make sure that's a part of the record, and that's all I have.
Slight further clarification on that, just because the building is partially in the Protection District, would a tenant in the portion of the building that's not in the district still have to get the approvals?
Yes, yeah, because it's all one parcel, the ordinance says anything within that parcel, even if it's a sliver of the corner and nothing in the building, the whole site is subject to that approval process.
Very good.
Three parcels overall, the overall site plan that will have to come in front of you for special land use.
Okay, so it sounds like it's pretty protected. We get another shot at it.
Perfect.
Okay?
I just had a couple, couple things. The item four on the special land use, the traffic, I think that's, was mentioned that the signal timing would be adjusted, so that's, that's a good, that's a good thing to signal at South Hill and Grand River. And then number nine, no, there are no wetland impacts on this particular piece. I know there were some wetlands in the whole general area, but this one does not impact them. And then, and then lastly, I just look at, it's nothing to do with the special land use per se, but just reiterating that, that we'll be able to navigate the aerial apparatus around the building, just the southwest corner, it may work just because of the scale of the building, but just check the turning movements on that, make sure we can get a fire truck all the way around.
Okay. Looking for an answer on that?
No, I just, it's just, just to make sure it will.
I think that probably Chief has already looked at that, has he? Yeah, okay, okay.
John, I have two questions.
Please, go ahead, Lisa.
For the applicant.
I hope you were done.
Or...
Yeah, okay.
I know that you asked previously for that, what is it, the Wabasto building was a spec building, and it had the pipe variance, and you're going to be coming to the ZBA for a height variance on this.
Correct.
Do you anticipate the other buildings in this entire complex would also, in the future?
Yes.
So, okay.
Yes, so we, you know, we can't, you know, I would love to say we'd love to come in and get a blanket variance for all the buildings within here, but we need to do that after we submit the site plan, just to follow the steps in the ordinance, so we're going to have to do a kind of...
Right.
I'm going to get a hotel out here, buy an apartment, because I'm going to be here a lot.
All right.
To that end, Lisa, we are taking a look at surrounding ordinances to see what modifications to the height limitations in the ordinance might be appropriate based on modern building standards.
Because I honestly, that building, the Wabasto building, can I say it right? It's beautiful, and I think that the height, you can't even really tell that there was a variance, so I think that if the attractiveness of the building is there, I'm, I mean, I don't see an issue with it, I was just wondering about the future. And then, is there going to be a, the same dilemma with the sign that Wabasto had where you requested a variance? This scale is so massive, do you think, or do you anticipate needing a, needing to come back to the ZBA for that?
I don't know. Wabasto was a single tenant. That building was actually set up to house up to two tenants.
Right.
Two or three, okay, two on that one, and this is being, this is intended to house up to four, so if one tenant takes the whole building, which could happen, only be one sign, but I don't, I can't tell you, depends on the tenant and their need for marketability and everything else.
Okay. Those are my only two questions.
Okay. Anyone else?
We do have some new apartments, though, for you.
You could probably build a pretty good hotel in just one of those, you'd probably have a pretty nice sized hotel.
Yep, yep. Okay. Well, if everyone is satisfied, a motion would be in order.
I'll move the approval of special land use AP 22-03B, subject to the review comments and then McKenna Letter dated March 25th, and I think that's it on the ZBA. Well, that, that is already, again, subject to the Planning Commission recommendation, which ties the requirement for a variance for height into the request as well.
I'll support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. All right, we're going to move on, consideration of approval of the Harrigan Distributors Special Land Use AP 22-6. Brian?
Yep, thank you, John. What you're considering this evening is essentially the second step that we just talked about when, when one of these spec building owners finds a tenant. Where we're considering this this evening is one of the, one of the Bill Clark Buildings adjacent to the Amazon Parking Lot on the west side of their private drive along the south side of Grand River. That building has not started construction yet, although there is a lot of vehicle traffic out there today. Harrigan Distributors is a company who distributes flooring, hardwoods, laminate tile, luxury, luxury vinyl to retail locations around the area. It is strictly a warehouse, essentially. There are very few employees that are going to be in here on a regular basis, with some delivery drivers, but overall, very small impact, no concern or possibility of harmful chemicals or processes or things like that. In terms of a special land use consideration for a tenant in the Wellhead Overlay District, this is kind of what we're looking for, low impact, low risk, kind of the ideal tenant here. So the proposal this evening is for 46,600 square feet out of the 108,000 square foot building. Our review letter indicates no areas of concern. The Planning Commission has approved the special land use and recommended, I'm sorry, they have approved the site plan previously for the spec building and have recommended approval of the special land use as well. We've mimicked those comments and recommend special land use this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian? This looks like the type of a business we'd be looking for, and it sounds like it's, you know, perfect fit for down there.
I'll move the approval of AP 22-06, subject of the, or I should say, in consideration of the findings of the March 25th McKenna Letter and of the Planning Commission.
I'll support.
All right. Any other discussions? It went pretty fast, okay? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to grant the permit for the fireworks display at Walnut Creek Country Club. I think this is just something that we've done every year, it kind of got behind the eight ball that when COVID hit, and I think they're trying to do it again. I think Chief has already looked at it, and he's approval of it, so this is a pretty easy one, but it's open for discussion.
John, I just had a quick question. I don't see their insurance certificate generally during special events, at least in other communities I'm familiar with. We don't make them provide an event insurance certificate until...
I think we do, though.
You know, until the time, I should say, until the time of the event.
Okay.
And if this is going to be in late June, then they're getting approval now, which is great, but if it costs them money to furnish it now and carry it for, you know, if it's an additional insurance policy, I would think...
And I think we do get that.
I just want to make sure it wasn't part of this package, so...
We have in the past, right?
Yeah, we have, yes.
So I expected they'd be providing it, I just wanted to mention, it was not provided with this package.
Yeah, yeah, maybe you're right about, you know, waiting until a little bit later.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to, you know, anytime you're adding coverage, it's going to cost you for a period of time, so I don't think it's reasonable to get it today, but we'll certainly need it ahead of the event.
So if you made a motion, you could put, you could put that in there, I guess, you could say requiring the insurance, maybe.
Did you make a motion?
I don't do that.
All right. I've been making a lot of them, I feel like somebody else might want to go. Moving kind of fast, I don't know.
Slower down.
I'll move the approval of the request to grant permit for fireworks display at Walnut Creek Country Club, just subject to them providing insurance as, as is required by the Township prior to the day of their event.
Support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to Tanglewood Road SAD update.
Okay, just wanted to give the Board an update. I, you know, I've spoken with all of you over the course of this project, and wanted to let you know where we stand today. So as you're aware, the HOA circulated a petition last summer, and at the time, the estimated costs were 2.3 million approximately. We were authorized by the Board to start design in November of '21, and we, right after that authorization, we engaged a geotechnical to-do pavement course, which showed the condition of the pavement to be significantly worse than what I had estimated. So we informed the HOA as well as the Board, and we attended an informational meeting for the residents on February 1st, and then in early March, Patty's office sent out an informational letter from the Township explaining what had occurred, and we've just recently received bids from, I think we received five bids, and with the low bidder, we are prepared for the hearing of the role to take place... low bidder, we are prepared for the hearing of the role to take place at your May board meeting and potentially contractor award as well. So, just wanted to let you know, next month is when we anticipate the final public hearing and the SAD process. Since the flyer from Patty's office went out, we've received two calls out of 349 units in the SAD, and only one objected to the increase in costs. In the second call, the resident wanted to make sure that proportionally, everybody else's costs were going up as well. So, that's the feedback that we've received from the residents since the mail-in. So, I just wanted to give you a brief update, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Nope, looks like it's moving forward.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. All right, now we're gonna move on to the discussion and consideration to adopt a resolution prohibiting further tax abatements. And this is, this has just been something that we've been talking about for a while. And, and I think the problem with these tax abatements, they become something that is an entitlement instead of a, of something that somebody comes in and actually asks us for. You know, the, I think we need a reset on this. I think we need to do some different criteria, I think we need to have a management, a little more management to our criteria, where everyone, everyone that comes in for, I mean, I think we even have people advertising, come to Lyon Township, you get a tax abatement guaranteed, you know? And I think we just need to reset this thing. And this is for a discussion, and, and we would like to, to dissolve the resolution and start over a little bit, maybe in the next few months. The DDA would like to put together some restructuring on this thing, and make it a little more concrete on the criteria for coming to this board and asking for a tax abatement. So, that's why this is on in front of you, and we're open for a conversation, if anybody would have any questions regarding it, please. Now's the time to talk about it, if you're for it, if you're against it. Patty, you can probably talk, and also talk about how a tax abatement works, how much work you have to go through to administrate these things.
It's, it's a lot, you know, it's easy to approve something, but then there's always the work that follows. And I'm settling our role right now, and you realize, once you get a tax abatement, when you're granted that, you're required to pay your taxes. And frankly, I'm not really allowed to turn it over to Oakland County, because once you do that, you actually jeopardize your contract with the township and your abatement. So, in settling this year, I had two companies that did not pay their winter taxes. So, basically, I had to hunt them down and get them to get in here and pay their abatement. It's a, it's a lot more, and there are individual settlement sheets, too. And I guess if you saw the whole role as it was, you'd be surprised at how much money we give away. And mostly, it comes out of the DDA. So, I just, and I agree with John, I don't like to see the advertisement on, on the websites that say that we're giving tax abatements. I mean, I can understand that if you come here and you're, we're luring you here, or there's, there's a good reason to give an abatement, instead of just, I feel like we're just blanketing, giving abatements away. And they are a lot of work, so.
And I, and I will say, even Amy goes through it, when these people call for tax abatements, and she runs the criteria that we threw together kind of quickly, actually. We didn't really spend enough time understanding what you should have for criteria for a tax abatement. If, if she says to them, okay, by our criteria, you get five years, they come unglued on her. They said, no, we need 12 years. This says you can get, but, but then we fight with them, and it's just, it's been a very hard thing to do. I think we need to have something that really says, you know, when you come here, and I'll tell you, the other thing is, the state of Michigan is not helpful, the MD, what is it, MDC?
It's a lot, it's a lot of paperwork and a lot of foul territory.
They push it, they push it on us, and it doesn't matter, you know, they want us to give tax abatements to everyone. You know, we have a pretty, a pretty great place to be, and we're running out of real estate. And it, I think it would be a nice feature of this board, have somebody actually come to it and ask for something like that. You're doing them a big favor by abating their taxes.
Well, it's half rate, it's half rates on real, and it can be half rates on personal. I think we have approximately 13 right now.
I was just gonna ask, can I?
Yeah, approximately 13.
So, I don't think we.
I know we have two personal properties and all the rest are real, so.
And I don't think we have to just, I mean, I don't think it has to go away forever. I think we need to give it a period of time where we actually remove it, and then reset it. Basically, figure out a better criteria for what it takes to get one. And, and that's just our thought. And I know that Amy had it at the DDA board and.
Yeah, we talked about it as a DDA board also, and we feel that the current procedure that's in place was good for what it was at the time, because there were different economic things going on. The guidelines we provided were more for enticing businesses here, but now, we are, as John mentioned, working on limited parcels that are available for some of these bigger industrial corporations. We're looking at a dire need for road improvement, and if we're giving up some of our tax dollars, we don't have those available for those road improvements. We're looking at some big projects coming up for the DDA, like the Ring Road, that we'd like to keep some of those funds for. However, we do see tax abatements as a good marketing and recruiting tool, so we don't necessarily want to see them go by the wayside long-term. So, I do just want to stress that the DDA board, when talking about this, did not want this to go away completely. What we would like to see is it suspended for maybe three, four, possibly five months, and give the DDA Economic Restructuring Committee an opportunity to really dig in and update those policies and procedures and scorecards, so we can be more in line with the needs right now. We're talking about some outside-the-box ideas of revamping it to possibly encourage retention of some of these businesses and companies that are here, as opposed to bringing in completely new ones, there's that idea. There's ideas of relying on targeted parcels might only be available for tax abatements, instead of just letting everybody apply. Only certain parcels would be able to apply. There's the opportunity of changing the scorecard that there's, the minimum number of workers that you bring in for new workers needs to be raised, or the amount of money that you're gonna be spending on that facility needs to be increased. Because like we said, when the scorecard was first put into place, it was really, there were a lot of properties, we were really trying to recruit people in there. And as you all know, the township is booming right now, and bringing in businesses and bringing in, you know, apartments and complexes, so we really need to revamp that scorecard to fall in line with what we're looking at today. So, our goal, as I said, would be to have our Economic Restructuring Subcommittee take a crack at this, put something together, to turn over to our executive committee, to go before the DDA board in full, and then bring it back to this body for approval. And we're estimating a timeline of anywhere from three to six months, is what we would look at, so.
Amy, why not then a moratorium? Because, I mean, the way that, just to say, this, this is pretty direct, and it says that the township's determined it's no longer in the best interest of the residents for us to grant further abatements under the act, or the, under the act, and, you know, the agenda says prohibiting further tax abatements, is that not sending a wrong message? That, I mean, that, to me, is worded in a way that says, we're, we're just done. And so, maybe the better way to approach it, and maybe there's a reason why you can't do a moratorium.
I guess it's probably not really a question to Amy, because she didn't write it.
So, why, Carol, are you interested?
Well, because it was my understanding that the, that was the thought of the way you wanted to go. You can always do an alternative, a moratorium, I would recommend at least six months to study.
Right, so if we did a six-month moratorium, then it gives them the time, and at that time, they may say, well, we don't want to.
Don't want to do it.
And at that point, they'll have had time to research it, but everyone in the community who would be looking at or considering the township wouldn't be given any, wouldn't be sending a mixed message, maybe.
But on the other hand, when it's written this way, you're saying to the community, we're not doing this anymore. That doesn't prohibit you in, to move forward and come up with new criteria, because you notice at the end of the resolution, it says, we can change this by a later resolution. So, it's whether you want to portray to the people, don't be marketing your property saying you're getting a tax abatement, because we're not giving them anymore, or whether you're still leaving people thinking, oh, we're still gonna be able to get them as a matter of course. So, it's, you know, it's a choice for you to make, that's why it's been put on for discussion purposes.
Well, the other thing that I look at, in a moratorium, it could set them for a waiting period, you know, if they're, they could say, well, heck, I'm gonna wait for six months before I make the deal with these buildings and see, you know, about, you know, tax abatement, not being guaranteed that they're gonna get one, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
I mean, as with any resolution, you can change it next month if you want, you know? So, it just depends on where you wanna go with it.
And I think, I think the idea behind this was basically a reset. It was basically not saying we're gonna prohibit them forever, but we need to reset the criteria for getting them. So, I don't know if that wording needs to be changed as far as, you know, other than just saying, you know, prohibiting, like you said, Sean, I agree with that, but what about resetting? We're working on getting it structured in a different way.
Well, and I think that's where you roll that into the moratorium language, because I think that the idea is a great idea. I mean, we, the township used to have to really go out and kind of shake the trees to get people here, and that's, that's the opposite problem we have now, I guess if it's a problem. But, you know, so, I think resetting, it does make a lot of sense, and for the reasons you've stated, which is, we have infrastructure needs that can't be paid for if people are paying half their tax bill. And, you know, by people, we're not talking about residents, we're talking about business entities that, you know, and the vast majority of communities pay the whole tax, but they don't get a 50% break, so they're fair share. So, I agree, John, I just feel like, you know, giving them the kind of time they need is, is no issue. I mean, six months, eight months, whatever, you know, six months with an opportunity for us to come back in six months, and you guys say, well, we still need 60 days.
I guess my only, my only comment would be, and I don't know right now whether there are any pending applications for tax abatements, but if you're gonna impose the moratorium, we're not gonna be able to do that until after, I mean, it won't be done till after those applications have been filed, which you typically write in some kind of appeal process from the moratorium, and you're gonna get the argument we applied before you decided to do this, so.
Do we have applicants in the queue?
I believe we do. I believe we have one right now, two. Two? Yeah, so.
Carol, I have a question, too. If it's a mor, if it's a moratorium, would it, would it be able to, would the DDA be able to change it if it, when it does come back, if it does come back, I should say, and you're limiting it to only certain parcels, does that, then it's a whole new tax abatement process? Wouldn't it be, I mean, if you put a moratorium on it, then isn't it just kind of halting for right now the existing one, with the opportunity to bring the existing one back?
Well, well, the moratorium basically gives you the ability to study and come up with what you think you want to do moving forward.
So, you would be, if, if it were a moratorium, you would be able to come back, it possibly, and institute the changes?
Or you could come back and say, you know what, we're not gonna give anymore. We've looked at this, and we don't believe we should give anymore.
But, anybody?
But, but like I said, my biggest concern is having arguments from applicants that may have applied, because you're, Brian, you wanna add to that?
But you're kind of hinting at, like, a moratorium, to me, sounds like a pause, and if we come back, we're gonna make minor tweaks versus.
Correct.
You know, a, a resolution to dissolve what we have, says we're gonna take a fresh look at this, at least in a perception standpoint.
I think that's, I think that's the way people do perceive it, I think you're accurate there.
If there's a possibility that it would be a tax abatement, if that's the route that the DDA goes, if that a tax abatement would only be on certain parcels, it's not just changing the score, the scorecard.
Yeah, it's gonna be a major overhaul.
So, I, I feel like, if it's something that is, that potentially significant, I would rather just personally halt it, not leave a couple of applicants kind of in the wind.
Wondering.
And, and then, if it takes longer than a few months, it takes longer than six months, even if it's a year, then we, we're not rushing you guys to come up with something. But I feel like if you came up with a really significant change, that's different than dealing with a moratorium.
Yeah.
So, I, I guess my initial reaction would be to be a little bit more on the side of going with the, with the current resolution that we have on the agenda.
I wouldn't object to that, I would just change the last whereas, that's, to me, to, it's going too far, and I don't know that we've determined that it's no longer in the best interest of the township. I think we've determined we need to relook at the criteria, readdress some of those concerns, but I think that goes too far. So, I would object to that, but I would not object to dissolving it so long as a whereas possibly strikes what that says, and instead says something along the lines of, we've determined, township's determined that, you know, an analysis needs to be performed on the current structure of, you know, the tax abatement scorecard or something like that, so that way they know, really, that's the final straw, is that we just, we're throwing this out and we're really starting over, so that way they kind of know what the direction is, not that we're dissolving it. Because if we think it's a bad idea now, in six months, how are we gonna think it's a good idea again?
That's, yeah, I, I came into this kind of thinking that I'm not comfortable with the current wording of just getting rid of it, I think it sends a message that we're just taking it off the table, and I don't like the idea of, you know, taking a tool out of the toolbox. So, I had thrown together last night some things, I was using the word suspending instead of moratorium, but going through and saying, you know, instead of, like, for the last resolved that, you know, that we may evaluate, send a clear intent by changing that to say, it is further resolved that the township shall reevaluate the current tax abatement policy, to ensure that the township has adequate tools to allow for appropriate flexibility in meeting its economic development goals, things like that. I have other, I don't wanna go through all the language if people aren't open to the idea of tweaking it to that way, but I also agree with Sean that the, that whereas talking, that we've determined that it's not in our interests and there's no additional need, I think goes a little too far.
Could you, Sean, I would agree that the last whereas is a bit, a little bit maybe overreaching. Could it be, whereas that town, that township has determined the existing resolution is not in the best interest of the township resident, residents? So, that we're talking about the existing one that we are.
My language stat for that was, whereas the township has determined that it is not currently in the best interest of the township residents, for the township to grant further tax abatements under the act, using the township's existing guidelines.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if, at the end, if you look at the summary, it's, it kind of says that, you know, the township may evaluate the need for tax abatements in the future, and it's determined if there's a need, that we're ready.
I understand the legal effect is the same, that we're just saying, we're ending what's there, and we can, we're free to come back and do it, but it's a, it's a messaging difference where I, I would like to express the intent that we're going to make those changes, rather than that we might.
I think the message that we need to send, and I'm just telling you from the day-to-day working on these things with these people like Amy does, it's not an entitlement, okay? And that's the message we need to send. This is not an entitlement. This is the township, actually, the township taxpayer residents doing, paying money to bring you here, because they want you here. It's not an entitlement. And, and the problem is, is that we've been so lenient with this tax abatement policy that it's turned them into entitled. And, and so, when you say, well, you don't have the criteria, even in the criteria we have, it becomes a fight, and there's lawsuit things being thrown out at us, well, we can, we'll take you to court then, you know, you set a precedent, you give it to everyone else, and that's the kind of things that we have to work around.
We've, I think lenient, John, I don't know if I'd agree with that, we followed the scorecard, we followed the scorecard and the recommendation, the DDA, who's tasked with making those recommendations to us, and while we've, you know, certainly granted several of them, I think 13 of them, we certainly, we, we used some criteria, and I, I don't think doing away with it, the current version is bad, I just feel like there's a gap between what the real intention of this is and what the language of this resolution is. I feel like there needs to be a, it seems like the two happened in a vacuum. Seems like this was drafted without maybe understanding the full scope and, and maybe sentiment of where the DDA is going, or that's how I, that's how I read it. And it seems like, you know, there's other language that needs to be softened. I mean, I talked about the last whereas, but the one, the second to last whereas says that there's no additional need to grant tax abatements as an incentive for developing the town, and that needs to come out, too.
Well, but, well, those can be reworded, you're talking about there's not a current need to grant it, because there isn't a current need to grant them.
I'm just saying, we may need a reword.
It's not, it's not currently in the best interest to do this. I mean, you know, it, it's just a matter of wording.
Under the current, under the current. Right, I mean, more of it needs to be reworded.
I think the bigger issue is, and the reason it's been brought to you. I think the bigger issue is, and the reason it's been brought to you like this is, do you want to be continuing to grant these?
Yeah, I, look, I like the way it's written, as is, I've, you know, I don't think we need to be doing this anymore. I mean, I'm looking at, we have 13 existing ones.
Existing.
Existing ones, and we have...
So we've had more in the past.
Yeah, we've had more in the past. I've been around since 2010, and we've, we've approved so many of these types of industrial developments, some with, some without, but, I mean, I'm looking at the neighboring communities, who are we really competing against? Maybe Novi, what they're, they've got higher taxes and city stuff, but, you know, none of these types of buildings, two that we've seen tonight, are ever in Milford, they're not in Green Oak, they're not in Salem, they're not in the City of South Line, they're not, you know, maybe you get one in Novi. I just, I don't see it as, as a need. It sounds, you know, and it seems like they're coming to us anyway, so why do we need to give that away?
I guess Robert mentioned a tool, a toolbox, as well, and I guess my, while I agree with you, I don't know why we can't keep one foot in and one foot out. I mean, I think sending a message to that community would be to strengthen the criteria or really limit, you know, maybe nobody gets 50% anymore, but maybe if a really great user that creates a lot of great jobs and, and maybe a, I don't know, in a cross-section of the industry that we're really after, for whatever reason, at some point, time comes in, they can achieve a 20% or 25%. I, I just don't know why we would just shut it off.
But, but I don't think we're shutting it off. I think we're, we're going to revamp it, and I think if, if the, if the language needs to be softer, I think Carol could probably put something together that's pretty point-blank, but still soften it a bit. But I don't think that, I think the looks of this whole thing, I, we could start this up whenever. Let's say somebody come in here and you really and truly wanted to tax, we could, we could have a meeting and, you know, how are tax abatements other than by resolution? I mean, is every tax abatement, do you have to have a resolution on the table, or is it case by case? Somebody walks into the board and they say, hey, you know, I've got this criteria, I want to bring it to you, and then you look at it and say, okay, well, this is something that, I mean, is it always done by resolution, Carol? Do you have to have a tax abatement resolution on the table?
If you had someone come in, you'd simply have a resolution that says, we had this prior resolution, but we've looked at this situation, we've determined we're going to grant this tax abatement, so that's your new resolution.
Okay, that's on somebody that maybe comes to the board.
Or somebody that you really, I mean, we see so much, you know, they come in, they request these abatements, and either they don't really invest the amount they say, or they promise all kinds of jobs, when in fact, they don't bring those jobs.
Well, there's a clawback provision.
I know, but.
They never will grant.
I know, but.
Do we clawback?
It's a tough one to clawback, though. It's hard to prove.
It's tough to really start trying to clawback.
I agree with Chris on this. I'm, I'm just, I'm done with them, I'm sorry. It's, when you see the advertisement and the people come in that think they're just absolutely entitled because he's advertised on someone else's commercial property card, right? We never had, we never allowed tax abatements. We never had tax abatements here, and then when the economy got bad, we decided to change the tool in the toolbox. And now I just feel it's taken advantage of, and I don't think we need to do it. I, it's just my opinion, I, I'm not saying that I would not ever be open-minded to it, but...
But again, as the real estate is coming down, Patty, too, like, to your point, as the real estate's going away, and Chris's point, I don't think, we don't have the properties left anymore. I think that our properties are going to be very, they're going to want them, they're going to come, just like you said, the buildings that these guys are building, they're in nowhere else. I mean, these are huge buildings that people want to be in. They want to be on Grand River, you know, they want to stay there, and I, I think they'll come. I think we've built that foundation that they're coming. They're coming, you know, and to give the money away, you know, all these monies that we need to build this ring road, things like that, these are expensive projects. I mean, it takes every dime we have, and, you know, everyone, you know, the residents want the ring road so they can get around Milford Road so that they're not tied at the Five Points, but, and they say to us all the time, when are you going to get this ring road in? Well, it's such an expensive venue, we've been saving the money in the DDA's coffers, we finally got up some money in there that I think we're getting close to where we could pull that, that hammer, but, but we need every dime. I mean, they're going to be on the hook for years and years to come.
Well, we, right now, we have two personal, or we have two personal properties, so we gave abatements on two very large pieces of machinery, and then the rest are all on real property, half-abatements, and there are some big businesses that are pretty wealthy, and we still gave abatements.
I'd say every year, one probably comes off, though, right? By now.
Hmm, I think it's a race, yeah, isn't it?
I still have, we have a couple, a couple smaller ones that we did, I think, five or six years.
Yeah, some of the smaller ones.
So, yeah.
I mean, I guess, I don't, they only have them because we gave them to them, so we're not a victim here. We gave them to these people, so I, I see your point. I don't think anyone's taken advantage of us. They've taken advantage of the opportunity, and we've still, we've still approved it. So I guess I would look at it that way. I don't, I'm not, I see both sides of this. I think there, there can be good things, there can be bad things. If somebody comes in and they make good on all the things we're supposed to do and all the things they promised, then it probably in the end is a very good thing.
Do you have to police them, Sean, and how do you do that? How do we really, truly police them? How do we really know how many employees? How do we really know what they're, why do I have to chase them down to pay their taxes? I did that as a common courtesy so they didn't lose their abatement. I didn't have to do that as a treasurer, but I did that because we issued them, you know, was it a mistake they forgot to pay their taxes? I don't know. But, but I shouldn't have to be doing all the extra work.
No, I don't think so.
And, and you're, you're talking about multi-million dollar companies, and I have to find them, punish them, didn't I?
I wouldn't find them. I'd send them a letter and I'd let it go.
Yeah, 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 I can't, I have to turn over to them, like, what they lose their abatement goes to the township.
And then you're, I mean, why are you chasing multimillion-dollar corporations or billion-dollar corporations to remind them of their...
Well, why are we giving them abatements?
Well, I don't...
I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just saying, I just, I think we need a break.
I agree with Sean, or I agree with Chris and Patty, that I don't personally think that really we, we need this anymore. The only softening that I would like to see, perhaps, is the last whereas is to change it to say that it's the current, you know, the current abatement is not in the best interest, and that there is not a current need to grant tax abatements. Those would be the only two ways that I would like to soften it, but I think that maybe there's even a bigger disconnect in what it is that the DDA might want. It seems like the DDA really wants to continue offering this, and it seems like, you know, Patty and John and Michelle are saying that this is, like, we're done with it, so maybe there's a disconnect with that, but I'm, I think maybe I'm kind of caught in the middle, like, which direction are we going?
I don't think, Lisa, I don't think we're saying we're done with it. I just think that it has to...
I think Patty's done with it.
But, but I still think that there's a, a different criteria we need to offer.
I'm a numbers person.
Right.
Remember, I see all the money we're giving away, and that, that disturbs me, and then, you know, it's extra, and there, you know, I get it at the end, and I have to follow it, you know, it's a lot of reporting, it's a lot of, it's a separate settlement sheets, and then when you actually see the money, I have rights...
Well, I get the fact that they're advertising. Oh, come to life.
Well, that's what I don't like. That even made me even more upset, is that, you feel like it's, like, how do you, okay, so the next person comes, we're just, now we're going to say no? That's, that's the problem. I just feel like, since it's there, anybody can apply, and if, and anybody can meet any other criterion, they could get two years. I mean, that's how I, I just feel. You would think an abatement is really, truly to lure somebody here that you would want.
I don't want to nitpick you, and I don't want you to think that, that, you said giving it away, the money we're giving away, but I would argue that we're not giving it away. It's money that we may not have otherwise had, and I think that, that, there has to be some consideration. I think the public needs to know that we're not giving anything away, that we traded a short-term tax break to attract a business that would invest both from real estate perspective and from an employee-based perspective in our community for the foreseeable future for a short-term benefit. So this board and previous boards haven't really given anything away, they've used it to entice that long-term investment. I think that, that's a more maybe appropriate, or the way I would maybe say it, and while I think that there is a course, a time and a place for it, and I think that maybe now we need to back off of this, I just think that, you know, we do need to have it available, and...
Well, I think it's always available. I think the resolution is always there to make if you need it, but I disagree, we are giving that money away, because you're right, if they don't build it, okay, we don't get it, but if they do build it, we're giving them half of a rebate for a amount of time. That would be coming into the full coffers of the township.
Taking the chance that they're not coming.
But this, this...
That assumes they won't come without the abatement.
Yeah, that's what you're saying, and...
This resolution doesn't give them that. This board, the seven of us, give them that. We either do or we don't, and so I think it gets back to the scorecard, needs to be tougher on them to determine what kind of criteria they'll need to, you know, I guess adhere to, or what standards they'll have to meet, or what kind of investments they'll have to put forth in order to achieve, both from an investment in infrastructure and real estate and employees, or from all, for all the above.
But I think we're saying that. I think we are saying that, Sean. I think we're, the DDA is going to work on the card.
Yeah, they're going to work on it.
And then it'll come back here to where...
Maybe, I don't want to say a little tougher, but maybe a little more...
Right, I guess we, when we put stuff out like this, resolutions should say what we mean, and we, we don't mean go away and don't ever come back, but that's what this says. This says we're done with it.
Well, what happens if they can't come to a criteria that works, that nobody can agree on? Then it will be gone.
I guess what I'm saying, that it might be, but, but if it goes away, then it goes away. We decide whether or not we bring it back. What I'm saying is, is if we're sending it off and it's bon voyage to the current standards, and that's what this should say, and then we'll, we'll see when we see it, and it either comes back and it's in good shape, or it doesn't ever come back, but this says, we don't think it's necessary anymore, and it's no longer in the best interest of the community. So how do we say that? How does this say that? And then in six months, we decide to re-adopt something, and then suddenly in 180 days, we've decided now it is in the best interest of the community. I think it's going to be...
That's the way tax, that's the way tax abatement...
No, no, I'm just saying the way it's written. I think it needs to be...
Why don't we just say currently? Why don't we just change the language and soften that currently there is no need?
I'm good with the softening of the, the last couple whereas's, but some people are not. And I, and I don't...
I really don't care. Sean, I don't, I don't care. If you want to soften it, I don't care.
Yeah, I mean, we can say, you know, that currently there's no, we don't need to grant tax abatements as an incentive, you know, and currently there's, it's not in the best interest to do so. We can say it like that.
Under the current, Robert had some good language, it kind of at the end added a few words that mentioned under the current formula or format, or...
I guess, let, let me ask, is there any immediate effect of, I guess, do we want to hash out the language right now, or do we do that over the next month?
Right.
I'm just, how does everybody, because, like, I mean, I have some stuff I typed up, I can rattle that off, but if, if we'd rather...
Well, I don't think we need to change the whole document. I think it's just a couple of sentences.
No, I think we're, we're softening a couple of things.
If we soften a couple of things, let's just do it tonight, so that way the people can actually know that it's done.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
It's a couple of sentences. Give Carol the sentences you want put in there, and we're done. But I don't want to change the whole thing. I mean, if you wanted to change everything, I don't know, you got one thing on the bottom. Change the whereas you don't like, and word that better, and...
The last two whereas's, I think, in my opinion, it'd be...
I'll just soften those to make it that it's the current situation. That's what I'll do, for those two.
Yes, so we'd have, like, whereas the township believes there is currently no additional need...
Right.
...the township has determined there is current, that it's not currently in the best interest.
Currently not in the best interest.
After that, I was adding, using the township's existing guidelines.
Yeah, I think something like that.
Just to clearly say it's, we think the problem is with the way we've been awarding these things. At least, that's my interpretation of it.
I don't, I don't personally think that the last section is needed identifying the guidelines, because...
Okay, that's, I can take that part or leave that part.
I would just say...
I just want the two currentlys.
Yeah, I like the two currentlys and leave it at that, because then it could potentially imply, well, it's really just the, the scorecard that we have an issue with, but if they come back, if the DDA comes back and says, well, we're going to keep the scorecard, but we're going to limit it to these parcels, well, then we're, we've just made a resolution that is going in one direction when the DDA might be going into a different direction. So I'd rather just say currently, and those two whereas's.
So no additional, basically, gets currently swaps in for no additional in the first whereas's, and then...
Right, yeah, and then no longer.
No longer comes out and is currently, is not currently in the best interest.
So it sounds like everybody's on board with those two changes, so that brings me to then wondering, is there any support beyond myself and maybe Sean for some changes to the therefor's to make it not as...
I'm going to make a motion.
What's saying not currently?
Never you brought that currently.
Wait, I guess, what do you, let me just understand what you're saying.
I guess, instead of just that we're no longer going to do this and that we may evaluate, I, I'd like to see it stating clearly that, yeah, we're not going to do this for now, but the DDA is going to reevaluate the policy and do some more investigating.
I don't think we need to get that deep in the weeds, do we?
Well, if we soften the currentlys, then I think no longer is just to me sending a message that anyone who's hanging out there shouldn't, shouldn't apply, is, is how I take it at that point, but...
All right.
And we can, in the last, very last paragraph that talks about the, for the resolution, we can say the township will evaluate the need for tax abatements in the future if it's determined that there's a need.
That's, then...
That's an affirmative statement, then we'll, we'll, okay, so just do that.
Good with that. One last, final little piece of, if we're saying that it will no longer accept or process any applications, is the effect of that saying, you know, say this goes away, and you whereas were saying, well, somebody could still come to us and ask for something. If we're saying that we're not going to accept any applications, then how do they come to us and ask?
We'll worry about that when it comes up.
Well, we could amend this in the future.
That's right, exactly.
I'm, I can go along with that.
The only piece to that is where we have already established an industrial development district, like quadrants, where there is an open, there's one open parcel there, this is what we were talking about this afternoon, we wanted some clarification, Carol, so I'm going to put you on the spot, but where we have one vacant spot...
Wait till the last minute to ask him, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. We've, we've got one vacant parcel of land in a district where we, the township has already said we would consider an abatement here. This policy doesn't affect that, we would still need to consider something because we've already promised.
Well, I don't know what it says. When you say it will consider, what does it mean? What does it say?
How do we promise that?
Does it say you shall grant one?
Well, by establishing the district...
Does that require that you must...
It requires that we consider one.
But I don't know. I have to look at all the stuff.
All right.
It may not be mandatory that everybody be given one in the district.
I don't think it says we have to get them one, but I think we would probably have to consider if they apply.
Just like any of the spec buildings have up to, I believe it's 10 years to apply for, for the tax abatements, if they were approved. for the tax abatements, if they were approved.
Yeah, let's look at that.
Is that like a PA 210 commercial rehabilitation or something? Is that what that is? Like, where you create a district and then these parcels are going to...
Well, it's like, whenever we get an application, you have two resolutions. You have a resolution establishing the district and then actually establishing the abatement.
Right, okay.
But we have some where the district is larger than one parcel.
And, yeah, let's look at it, because we can deal with it in a subsequent resolution time.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, but the other thing, it's interesting that you just brought that up, Sean, because I wondered whether I shouldn't add the Commercial Redevelopment Act in the initial paragraph as another example.
Instead of 198, 201.
Add it as well.
As PA 210 commercial rehabilitation, I would.
Yeah, okay. Everybody agree with that?
Do we have...
It does say including, but not limited to. If you want to add it explicitly, that's fine.
Right, and I've got a couple in there, but I'd like to add that as well.
Just add another therefore, we're good.
It'll just go in the list.
I just want to say therefore.